We'll call to order the Board of Franklin County Commissioners meeting for Wednesday, August 2nd.
Commissioner Howard?
Present.
Vice Chair Renaud?
Present.
Chair Weymeyer?
Present.
Commissioner Oglesby?
Present.
Commissioner Dunn?
Present.
If you'd please stand and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance, remain standing for the invocation led by Pastor Leonard Chesbrough.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let us pray. Gracious Father God, we thank you for this day you've given us. We thank you for many blessings. I pray, God, your blessings upon all of our county workers and, Lord, we thank you for the job they're doing. And, Lord, just bless each one. Lord, just be with us this day, Lord, and just guide and direct in this meeting. Have your way, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Do we have any public comment today?
No.
How about correspondence and organizational business?
None at this time.
All right. Consent agenda today would include approving, consider approving, the minutes from our meeting on July 26th. Claim vouchers in the amount of $496,867.30. Payroll in the amount of $1,143,703.52. And that would be from the period of June 21 through July 20.
And you have tax change orders laying right there.
We do have tax change orders, thank you. Tax change orders in the amount of a negative $719.38. So their motion to approve consent agenda has read.
So moved.
Commissioner Howard?
I'm staying for the minutes on July 26th. Vote yes on the rest.
Commissioner Renaud?
Yes.
Commissioner Oglesby?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Chair Weymeyer?
Yes. Our first item of business would be consider executing a supplemental agreement for...
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning, Jim.
KDOT and Franklin County entered into agreement number 330-16 dated September 1st, 2016, for the intersection of Kingman and US 59. This supplemental agreement extends the work to the west and adds $450,000 to the original contract, making the total now 1.7 million.
That we would receive from the state?
Yes, sir. Paying for construction.
From the intersection to the industrial park.
The request is a motion approving the execution supplemental agreement number one.
Anybody like to make a motion to accept $450,000 from the state of Kansas?
I'd like that motion to approve.
Second.
Commissioner Renaud?
Yes.
Commissioner Oglesby?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner Howard?
Yes.
Chair Weymeyer?
Yes.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you. Well, our second item of business would be to discuss the replacement of the county's current radio system. Alan Ratcliffe, our Emergency Management Director, will fill us in on details.
Good morning.
Morning.
Last week, we discussed the proposed radio system, and there was a few unknowns that were in there on the pricing. And I just want to go over to make sure that we've got everything that is needed for the radio system. And then, I think, County Administrator wants to talk a little bit about the financing and the contract side of it. Just want to make sure I've handed you a five or six-page document to make sure that you understand that we are the customer for Motorola. And when I say "we," it's Franklin County. All the other entities then would pay the county for their radios that they're purchasing. And with that, I know we've had discussions on the financing side that the county would help with that, and I think Derek can kind of allude to that a little bit more. But we've talked about going out for an RFP and including all of those others in there also, and I'll let Derek talk a little bit more about that. The overall pricing, we've went out after last week's meeting, we talked to all of the entities that are wanting to buy radios. Some of those numbers changed, and as I mentioned last week, that was a line that we thought would change a little bit. The infrastructure, that line item stayed the same. The dispatch equipment stayed the same. The subscriber number went up just a little bit, not an awful lot, but it did go up just a little bit. Some of the radios, there was a few that got a few more portable radios, some bought different models of the mobile radio. We were offering two different types, so they made some changes there. Comes to the subtotal of just under 3.7 million. And then, as I talked last week, we do have a system discount up until August the 9th of 271, 271, 267. And then there's another one for about a bundled discount of a half a million, and that bundled discount is why we're the sole customer, because we're putting 15 or so agencies all in one bundle. That leaves a total of 2.9 million. And then, where it's got a total system, which is what the contract covers, we're locking in the 10-year pricing for the post-warranty services, years 2 through 10, and that's just shy of a million dollars. So that's where the 3.9 million comes in. It's all in the contract to lock in that pricing. Then if we look at the next page, the county radio pricing, we've got that split out by departments. And this is for the radios themselves. There's $476,000 for the total cost of radios, and between the departments, $266,000 of that will be paid out of this year's budget, leaving $210,000 on the financing side. Then if we look at the next page, talks a little bit more about the total cost and the financial side of it. Has the discounts in there, dispatch equipment coming out of the 911 fund, the down payment, and then I've got additional costs, which I'll talk about on the next page. But that's a total to be financed of just shy of 1.3 million. And if we look at the additional cost, one of the unknowns last week was the AT&amp;T connections, because we will be running data through dedicated lines on AT&amp;T, one from dispatch to our main tower, and then from the main tower to the state system. I'm not able to get a cost from AT&amp;T until we say we want to do it, and then they send an engineer out, and within three days, they can tell us what that's going to cost. But we do have a secondary option, too, and that is a microwave link from our main tower to the state Paola Tower, and that's where we come up with that $100,000. The equipment and the install of that would be around $100,000. So that's where that fee came up. And then I added in, I talked last week about the non-P25 radios and interoperability, that's $6,000. That's doing work on the install of the repeater and antennas on our tower trailer, plus some additional radios for interoperability with the counties around us for my department. The one thing I didn't mention neither last week was the install cost for all of the radios, the mobile radios. We didn't have that. It's not part of the Motorola contract, and it's estimated it'll be about $25,000. We've left that to the individual county agencies and non-county governing bodies to get with either TFM or whoever vendor that they're using to do the installs. We just want to make sure that the installs on the mobiles are done properly, because there is a three-year warranty that's being covered on the radios in the contract.
Is that $25,000 just for the counties?
Just the counties, yes. And that number, it's going to be, that's an estimate, because there's a big difference between putting a radio in a road grader or dump truck versus putting one in a patrol car or an ambulance or my vehicles, too. And that was one of the changes. JDC, for instance, had the radio that they use, that they transport people out of county with. Well, they had ordered one of the mobiles and then got to look, and well, that's not going to work in there, so they went with the other model of mobile radio. So it's different on all our vehicles on the installs. And these are just estimates. They can get better figures from whoever they want on their vendor to do their installs. And then the tower site maintenance, one of the things that came to mind after last Wednesday, too, is we've got additional work at all of these tower sites. There has to be additional grounding, so the rock base is going to be tore up at all four of our sites. We'll need additional rock brought in. Plus, we've also, on our inspections out this year, we've got some posts that have rotted off on the two south tower sites, which are out in the middle of pastures, so they don't have a chain-linked fence. They have a cattle fence built out there, and we need to do some work on that, to maintain that, and this is the perfect time to do it, and then add our additional rock at those sites. So that gives an additional cost estimate of $141,000. Then, when we talked about that $998,000, I've given you a breakdown of the 10-year post-warranty cost, plus also our internet fees that we have figured in, and these are as close figures as we can get right now on the internet fee. And then, of course, the post-warranty services and SUA 2 are locked-in pricing on the P25 And you'll see those numbers go up as we go down. Year 10, of course, our equipment's 10 years old, and there's better chances of failure in them having to work on it. I will, I mentioned last week, one of the things that we talked about was our system being monitored 24/7. Not only does that let us know that we have an issue on our system, but that also assists all of the fire departments in the county, because that's one thing we're not currently doing, and that affects the ISO ratings, which in turn affects the homeowner's insurance in the county for fire protection. So this system will help with that, because we are monitoring 24/7 on our system. Any questions?
All the dispatch equipment being paid out of the 911 fund? Are we financing a portion of it?
Now, we, Alan and I and Janet, met with Sheriff Richards to discuss that. Everything currently listed there, the $514,000, will come out of the 911. One thing that that does not include, however, is the recorder. It's my understanding that that's another $50,000 or $60,000. And while we haven't, I guess, finalized where that's going to come from during that meeting with the sheriff, we did sit down, go through the numbers, and show him that that amount as well will be able to come out of the dispatch fund. And in fact, I think it's going to have to, because when we budgeted for this, we budgeted 1.3 million at 4%, which is kind of the outstanding rate we have for Motorola. I mean, obviously, with these additional costs, we're pushed right up against that 1.3. So again, I don't want to speak without the sheriff here, but I do believe we'll be able to bring that recorder out of the dispatch fund. And then, on the additional costs, it's my understanding, Alan, that $100,000 is meant to be the worst-case scenario, that it's likely that the cost for the AT&amp;T installation will be under that. Is that correct?
Yes, that's what we're hoping for. The microwave system is the system that can be used, but as you know, you have a heavy rain with a microwave. It's going to cut down on our signal. It's not the preferred connection. A T1 line is the preferred connection. I'm being told we have a T1 line available out at the main site. I just don't have the construction cost to make that connection. So I'm hoping this is the worst-case scenario and on the high side.
And one of the things that we have to balance is this, and it kind of depends on where the installation cost comes in, because when you think about the transit, or the transit tax, the 911 fund, I don't want to take too much out of that and leave the sheriff short, because we know he has next-gen 911 coming down the pipe. It does us no good to basically liquidate that, only to have him come back in and have to ask for a shot in the arm, so to speak. So where that, I guess, how much we take from that is still kind of fluid, depending on what these other costs actually turn out to be. But at the very least, the 514 that you have in front of you will come out, and I don't think that puts him in any situation at all, so...
Well, once we've approved this, what's the timeline then for these expenditures down the road? I mean, actually getting it installed and up and running?
Well, and that is fluid as well. And one of the reasons we initially had this up for approval today, however, I'm not going to ask the board to approve it today, because we're still negotiating with Motorola. Their current contract asks us to pay 25% basically of the infrastructure down upon execution of the contract. Well, that's somewhere between $300,000 and $400,000. I'm not sure the organization is ready to write that check today or this week, so I need to talk with them about a different framework. But if I recall, and correct me if I'm wrong, I don't have it in front of me, they're requesting 25% upon execution of the agreement, 60% upon delivery of the equipment, and then the last 15% is spread out. I don't recall exactly when, but I think it's in $5,000 chunks at various installation points. And we have a Motorola rep here who could maybe speak to that.
So, yeah, like, when is it all going to be finally done and up and going?
Basically, what Derek's saying is, when we finance it, we'll have a chunk of cash from the loan that we could pay, but we just don't want to be out $300,000, $400,000 until our financing.
I think it's better for the organization to get the financing. If Motorola is agreeable, then we'll have the entire chunk. We know we have it. There's no questions, as opposed to, you know, paying $300,000 or $400,000 now. With financing still out there pending, I just don't like being in that situation, so...
Lot of cash to be out of.
It is. So that's one of the items I was hoping to...
So I've got some clarification on that. Last night, basically, you don't have to have it the day we sign. We'll sign. I'll submit the order. It'll go through legal and all that and get approved. Once that's done, then, we will send you an invoice. Usually about 10 days after we sign, you get an invoice, and then you have 20 days to pay it. So that'll give you guys some working room there on your financing. And the way the contract works is, you have your initial payment when we execute the contract, and then you'll have your 60% down at time of shipment. And then the rest of them are milestones on completion of work that we finish as we go. So once we get the sites installed and turned on, we call it lit up, you'll hear us say sometimes, once they're lit up, there'll be a milestone there. Then, once we test the equipment, there's a milestone there. And then the last milestone is when we actually do an acceptance test plan with you all, and we come out and walk through all the equipment, and you guys say, yes, it works like we agreed to, and that's the last milestone, is the way that works.
And then there's one other payment in there on the subscribers.
Yes.
Because those will all be shipped at once, and then we'll have that payment for the subscribers, too.
So in theory, this will be done by...
So we're shooting for November, December timeframe, but that time of year, I'm always nervous, because we have winter. And I know Troy's guys don't want to be climbing on towers when they're icy and snowy and windy, so it's flexible there. It could be, but we're hoping before the end of the year, this thing is live and operational.
Okay.
November is my ideal time. That's what Alan's kind of shooting for, but with the weather, we've got to be flexible there somewhat, just because of the amount of tire work we're doing and things like that and site work. We get an early winter, we get snow on the ground and stuff, it's hard to do the grounding work and things like that.
Well, and there's things in here that can delay that, too.
Yes.
I mean, we've got to do a radio template, for instance, depending on how long it takes for us to work with KDOT at the state to get that radio template done to where it's satisfactory for us. That takes some time. There's just, there's a lot of moving parts in this.
Licensing and things like that with the FCC could take some time as well.
Frequency coordination.
Yep.
So 30 days after we approve it, we would need, that would probably give us enough time to issue an RFP, publish it, and go through them?
Well, right, and just hearing that, I might request additional time there, because I'm not sure if within 30 days we can do that, primarily because I think the RFP in and of itself is going to be tricky on how we draft that. And I'll talk to you a little bit, and we talked last week about financing. Well, from the very get-go, Motorola offered us an option, 4%, however, we would be financing all of it, so 3-point-whatever-million. The issue with that is, and you've heard me talk about this before, we have that $10 million bank-qualified limit. And with what we've already financed for the industrial park, as well as some public works equipment, we would go over that amount, and we would get hit pretty hard with a lot of interest fees. So what I've done in the meantime is I've reached out both to a local institution, as well as a national institution, just to ask the question, is there a framework whereby each subscriber finances their own, however, they collectively get the group rate? And the answer I've gotten from both is yes. And so my RFP is going to be written such that each entity finances their own. In doing that, we keep our amount, obviously, down. We stay under that bank-qualified limit. However, each of the other subscribers will get that group rate. And I just want to see what those proposals come back and what they look like, but I'm just not sure we can have all of that done in 30 days, so we might need a little bit more time on that. But that's kind of the timeline that we're looking at, so...
Any other questions? The Motorola rep, for Alan, for, no?
So the difference between, what are we going to gain by waiting one more week? Then, we're going to get some more information on the RFP or on your interest, or?
Well, I literally, I mean, you would be, you are going to vote to approve a contract. I am still negotiating that agreement. Like, what, the things we're talking about today are going to be adjusted in that contract, and so I'll have that back to you next week.
That's good. All right. Well, no action to take and no other questions. Appreciate your time.
All right. Thank you.
Thanks. Our third item of business is to discuss the proposed 2018 budget.
As you all know, our budget hearing is set for next Thursday, the 10th. In advance of that, the board requested the opportunity to review the budget, look at it, iron out any questions that it may have. Obviously, today would be that opportunity. With that, I will likely turn this over to Janet for any questions that the board might have in terms of the specifics, so...
If you guys have reviewed the budget, compared to what we presented to you guys in all the study sessions, what we merely did to fill out all of these, we get these worksheets completed, was take all the worksheets that we had reviewed in our study sessions and put those numbers into this worksheet. The only unknowns that we had at that time that have been changed in this budget are the radio project. As Derek stated in our previous item, we put some money in the budget for the financing of the radio system at 1.3 million at 4% for the 10-year time span, which is what we've been talking about for the radio system. So if you look at the emergency management budget, there is a special line item for the radio system, and I believe it's $212,000 that we've put in there. And the way that breaks down is $160,000 for the payment of the radio system per year. And then, in the first year, the maintenance was approximately $42,000 was estimated, and then another $8,000 we put in there for the electricity at the sites that's going to be needed additional to run the air conditioning. We're not quite sure what that electricity bill will be, so we budgeted what we thought was a little bit high. So $212,000 in there for that. And that is worth about .92 mils. So the other project that we did this year that cost us significantly was the industrial park project. Once we got all of the paperwork back on that, the amortization schedules revealed that we would pay $251,734 in 2018 for that project, which equates to 1.101 mils. So those two projects together were 2.021 mils, and we're at a difference of 1.949. So those two projects alone have resulted in the increase in the mil levy that you guys see in front of you today.
But for those two projects, what would that situation look like?
So if we were to not have done those two projects, then we would have been below last year's mil levy by .072, so slightly down if we would have done. And the budget does include everything that we discussed with you guys at the study session. We did make one amendment to lower the employee cost down slightly from the way that we had budgeted it last year, which was, we budgeted the merit increases for a full year instead of on their anniversary dates. The employees do get their increase on their anniversary date, so we did decrease the employee cost slightly to get this in where you guys wanted to see it, where the only increase that we have are these two projects that we did, that you guys have been working on diligently.
There's no one that knows this better than Janet, but it was no small feat to get those 3.5% between cost of living and performance increases into this budget and not only stay under the lid. I mean, technically, we could have reduced, as she said, despite those increases. So, I mean, we have asked every single department to stay flat, and to their credit, they've all basically agreed. I mean, you sat in on each of those individual hearings, so, I mean, we put in there what those hearings reflected, and we've had several departments who we've asked to make cuts here and there to do that. And I mean, everybody seems to be on board with the greater vision, of course, being these performance and merit increases for the employees. So very happy that we were able to do that, because the tax lid made that incredibly challenging, so...
Would the radios not be exempt from the tax?
They are exempt.
The radios are exempt, and if you, that's why you see a separate line item in emergency management's budget. They are in the general fund, but we had to make a separate line item for them, so we could specifically identify that. In emergency management as a whole is not out from underneath the tax lid. They are subject to the tax lid. But the radio project, since it is a public safety for fire and police and other emergency services, it would be exempt. So that's the reason that we're able to put that on top.
What's the mil up to, dollar-wise? $200?
The, oh.
What page is that on?
It would be roughly $228,583.
How much is that up from last year?
How much is our mil up from last year? It was an increase of 1.949.
No, the total, what?
Oh.
What was last year? What was last year?
Sorry. Last year, it was 223,824. So roughly, just under five grand.
Year or two before that, it was 212.
And in 16, it was 218.9, so.
All right. Comments? Questions?
When'd you say the public hearing is, Derek?
10th.
10th?
At 5:30.
5:30.
Now, next year, American Eagle, the rest of that'll be coming on. That'll be an influx of revenue, so.
I think, since you brought it up, Sheriff Waymire, the other thing to keep in mind is, I mean, this is part one of the industrial park. We lowered the amount that we were going to bond to stay under that bank qualified limit. And we have another significant amount next year that we're also gonna have to bond to finish that project up. What that amount is will vary depending on engineers' estimates. But now hopefully, there's not another multimillion-dollar project next year as well. But I guess I would ask the board to keep that in mind, that, you know, we're still not through the industrial park at this point, so.
Questions? Comments? Anything for Derek?
I appreciate what Janet, everybody else who worked on this. Hard project to do every year.
Went very well this year, though, the overall process, so.
A lot of moving parts, and all the department heads were really willing to get us information when we needed it, and it did go very well this year.
Good. All right.
No one likes to see that, that increase. But with that being said, with the projects that are on the table, there really is an alternative, and I really do appreciate the work that was done. And I also appreciate the fact, Derek, that you're looking at this, being able to provide those cost of living and merits for employees, because I believe the employees are a tremendous asset to the organization. And protecting them and taking care of them is a great benefit. And overall, I think it will benefit the organization to keep them and to keep them happy, so.
I appreciate that, but I will tell you, I think the bigger thanks goes to each individual department head and elected official, because, you know, all of them, to varying degrees, would like to do various projects. And, but they all understand that if we're gonna collectively, you know, provide this to our employees, we have to, just the financial reality in this county, we have to stay largely flat right now until such time as American Eagle comes on the books, or the industrial park fills up. I mean, that's why we're doing these projects, is to hopefully grow the tax base. But, you know, we have several members from the sheriff's department here, and I know Jeff sacrificed a lot of things that he would have liked to have in order to make this vision come alive, and it has. So that's, I commend all of our department heads and electives for buying into that vision.
Hopefully, we're turning a corner as far as the rate we'll be assessing, because I'm hopeful next year with the American Eagle, the industrial site out there coming on, that'll be additional revenue, which should offset what we need to bond potentially. And like I say, hopefully, we're turning the corner and we can get more industrial, industrial users, big, big pieces of valuation added to the tax rolls to where that overall burden starts going down again, so. Kinda highlights why we're doing what we are out at the industrial park, so. All right. No action needed, right?
Nope.
I think so. And that brings us to staff reports.
Speaking of the industrial park, earlier this week, Jim and I went and met with Rural Water District 2. You'll recall that one of the obstacles that arose unexpectedly was Rural Water District 2 has a water line right in the right-of-way that we're gonna need out there for our roads on the industrial park. Well, when we originally looked at that, the original cost, which I misrepresented to the board, actually, because our engineer didn't include a cost of four under I-35, but the original cost of that was gonna be just shy of $300,000 to move that line and get it where we needed it. But Jim and I started looking at it. We started talking with Dennis Tharp from the city of Ottawa, started talking with the water district. And we've got creative, and we got it to where it's gonna cost just over 100,000 now. They're gonna tie into a loop, and Jim might know, he's the engineer, better than I, exactly what we're gonna do. But I think we found a way to shave about $200,000 off the cost of relocating that line. So even though that's, I mean, that is still an unexpected expense, I consider that a victory, because it's something that we're gonna have to do regardless, so. Other industrial park news, we're currently exploring federal financing options. Now, obviously, we've already bonded, you know, the, I believe it was 7.5 million, but the second part, we might be able to get advantageous financing through the feds, and that's currently something that I'm looking at along with the city manager. So I'll provide the board with updates as they come, but... And then, in terms of the actual construction timeline, originally, we were set to start this fall, and we were gonna work on roads alongside the city who is working on utilities. Well, the further Bartlett got into it, they, I don't think, for various reasons, they liked the idea of having both of those projects going at once. So you'll see, and I won't speak for the city of Ottawa, but you'll see they have pipe out there now, and I think their construction will commence relatively soon. We're gonna hold off on the roads until next spring. However, it's very, very possible, if not likely, that construction on the bridge on Kingman Road will commence this winter, during the dry months. I think they can get a lot of work done on that. So I would expect that we start construction on the bridge late this fall, with the roads following up next spring. And then, depending on the availability of the material, the contractors step in any time, Jim, but very well could have those roads completed by late next year. So that's, that's what we're looking at in terms of timeline, so.
Doing it, not all at once, but sequentially. As I recall, there's maybe some economy scale with the mass grading. It not happened to lay some temporary asphalt at the intersection, and there's a few things like that.
Absolutely, and that, you talk about mass grading. That's still such a fluid situation. And one of the things we've talked about recently is to refrain from doing the mass grading and potentially pass that cost along to, I mean, there's a lot of land out there. And yeah, we could mass grade it all and build the detention pond and have it just... But we also don't have to do that. And so we have to take into consideration what we gain by having a perfectly level piece of land versus potentially trying to pass that cost on. So those decisions will certainly, you'll be involved in those, so.
All right. Thanks. Anybody from the sheriff's office? Nope. Nick left. Larry, you have anything?
Because I have, we do have some positions that will be open now. Mr. Donald Meyer has volunteered to continue to serve. I'd like to appoint him, but we will have to take this matter beyond your agenda for next week. But we will be looking forward to, to line commissioners, because two of them served out in the armed service.
All right. Be publishing that soon?
We'll be asking for your approval to publish this in a face meeting and so on.
All right.
I was in contact with Vance Brothers, and they have been assured by their subcontractor that the cover material will be delivered by the end of August.
All right, good. All right. Commissioners' comments? Board reports?
I can start. I went to the RC&amp;D meeting yesterday. State Representative Kevin Jones was the guest speaker. He just talked about some of the stuff that went on while they were in session, and some of the committees that he is serving on at this time. And just basically visited with us about what happened at Topeka. And that was actually the main thing of the meeting. They talked about the bikes, another trip to Ellsworth that's coming up. They talked about the partnership grant with Project 17 and where that was at in that process. And they updated the grant with KCPNL involving environmental projects that the RC&amp;D's involved in. And that's the only thing I've been to since the last time I was here.
Did they talk about collecting tires, Rick?
Do what?
Collecting tires.
No, they didn't.
I did go to the National Night Out last night. It was a very good time had by most of the neighborhoods that I visited, anyway. It was a good opportunity to be out with Lieutenant Hall from the sheriff's department and have some time to talk with him, and also with Sheriff Richards as well at his office. So I thought it was a very good event last night.
Derek and I attended FCDC yesterday morning. Since there was a quarterly meeting the week before, there really wasn't anything new. It was just organizational business, not, no highlights, really, unless you can think of anything to add, so. All right. Well, if there's nothing else, ask for a motion to adjourn.
Make the motion.
There's second.
Second.
All on paper.
Aye.
opposed, adjourned.